Okay, I'd like to open the Select Board Session on February 2nd, 2023. And as noted, we start with an hour actually of executive session from 6:30 to 7:30. So I'd like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to read the executive session portion of the agenda, please.
Good evening, everybody. So under the executive session for item number one is a meeting with Town Council, an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Sections 21A, 3, 6, and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus Decam 449 Mass. 444, 2007, to discuss 31 Hunting Lane, 41 North Main Street, and Igor Lebasky at Tell versus the Town of Sherwin, number MISCPS 000193 HPS. Item number two is meeting with Town Council, an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Sections 21A, 6, and 7, Public Records Law, General Law, Chapter 4, Section 7, parentheses 26, and Suffolk Construction versus Decam 449, 444, 2007, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and to discuss privileged legal opinion regarding the lease of units at Woodhaven. Item number three is pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, and that is to comply with or act under the authority of General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 22, to review the minutes of executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, public records requests, and Suffolk Construction versus Decam 449 Mass. 444, 2007, minutes of executive session of August 11th, 2022, August 19th, 2022, and January 19th, 2023, and confidential legal opinion regarding farm road deed restriction. Item number four is strategies session session to prepare for contract negotiations with non-bargaining employee pursuant to General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, and that's the lieutenant's position for the police department. You'll need a second and a roca, Mr. Chair.
Okay, do I first? Do I have any suggested revisions or amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing, you'll know we added item four, I think yesterday afternoon or this morning, so that's an added item. So do I, I do declare that we need to discuss these four items in the executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well. So we're gonna put a few of you in the waiting room. Kitty, we're gonna put you over there. You wanna take care of that for me?
Yeah, I'll put, stop putting him in the waiting room.
Yep.
I'm gonna put Deancisional in there too, correct?
Yeah, Dan, I think we'll have you join on item four.
Okay.
Make sure to pause the recording.
We'll start the open session by having the Assistant Town Administrator read the agenda for the open session, please.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the board can vote to accept the agenda as writ, as I've read it, or amend the agenda. I don't believe we have any public comment tonight. Items can be taken out of order and topics not anticipated 48 hours in advance can be added. The one item we have tonight is, one of the items is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant, and a set of previously approved minutes from the A-12 2021 Select Board Meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for February 16. Under the annual town meeting 2023, we have Sean Colleen here to discuss the acceptance of the state legislation allowing lower speed limits. We have the updated annual town meeting warrants, which was emailed later today because there was another change made to it from what was in your packet, an updated checklist, and an updated timeline. Item number three is an APA update. I don't see Jeremy here tonight, so I think Deb Saffering, our interim finance director, will be reviewing the new APA updated list. Item number four is consideration of routine business, which would be select board reports, and maybe some town administrator reports, not sure yet.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Does anyone have any suggested revisions to the agenda? So you wanna make a motion to approve it as read by Diane? So move, Paul? Or do you have a comment, Paul? Okay, you're...
I think it's on you.
I can't hear you, Paul. But Marion?
Yes, aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I might as well, I have a motion with respect to the consent agenda.
Provo, provo.
Second?
I've...
Go ahead, Eric.
Just a quick question, consent agenda. There's a small chance I can't make the 16th. I'll see what I can do, just so you know. At some point, we were on a different type of every other week. I don't know if it's possible to like meet 2/23, 23, which is the next Thursday, and get back on basically that every other week. I know it sounds different to some people, but there's other reason I want that, and the 16th might be a little tough for me. I don't, I don't know if we have to decide now, or...
20, the problem, the only problem with the 23rd, I'm actually gonna be here, but...
Break week, I think.
Vacation week.
School break, yeah.
Maybe we said it before, I'll see, I'll try to make 16th, because I think we might come before you with a library executive session item.
Yeah, Brian and I talked about that already.
I'll talk to you.
Because you have a mediation session, I think, at some point, so...
13th.
Yeah, okay. So we'll talk about that offline though, Eric. So I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am I as well. And Sean is here, I know. I don't know if you want to share your screen, Sean, or just describe to us this. We all got in the packet, the speed limit or an article language. Is he here, Diane? I don't...
Yeah, I'm here. Oh.
I can read it if you want.
There's not much, well, I don't know that we need to read the whole thing.
Yeah.
Let me open back up to what you had in the packet. I'm not even sure we need to really... Shoot, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
The last...
What we have is Chapter 90, Section 17C.
Yep.
Was written to allow towns to basically dedicate the entire town or part of the town that doesn't already have a statutory speed limit. If it fits within the the business district or thickly settled definition, which is very loosely defined at this point, then either all or some roads will just revert to that speed limit. Currently, it's 30 miles an hour. So every time you drive into town from Natick, our sign at the end of Butler Street tells you you're being naughty because you're going over 30 miles an hour. Well, if you're going over 30 miles an hour through downtown Sherwin, you're going too fast. So that speed limit should be 25, and it's... That should really be without debate, that through downtown Sherwin, there's crosswalks, there's a school zone, there's businesses. It should be widely agreed on that that should be 25. Most of town actually is thickly settled by the definition that we supplied, that the state has. It's an average of 200 feet per house. The only person I see that's on this call is Selectman Duranzas that's not within 200 feet of another house. Even, I think even Marion's street, the house is probably averaged 200 feet. Everyone else, all the neighborhoods fit within that category. All of North Main Street, except down by the town line, fits within that. So what we're trying to do is just accept the Chapter 90, 17C, and 18. And then after we accept it, we can then, the Select Board will have a hearing on where to dedicate those, and that's what we can debate. Do we go all the way to Douses? Do we start it at Butler Street? It's pretty obvious where we go on the south side. The churches are all within the business district, the town halls within a business district. It's debatable on North Main Street, Elliott, where to go to. But I don't think it's debatable whether or not we should have a 25 mile an hour zone through downtown Sherwin. So the first, the way this, you know, as you all saw, the first thing we have to do is take it to town meeting, accept what the state wrote for Chapter 90, 17C, and 18B. And then sometime after that, we'll bring it back to the Select Board, myself and probably the Public Safety Committee, on what we propose to dedicate as thickly settled business districts, and where to put that. But we can immediately after we do that, we can then put signs up. I was trying to find some. My wife now works in Lexington. Every time I drive into Lexington, I see not only entering Lexington, but they have signs that the townwide speed limit is 25 unless otherwise posted, and I I think that that would almost get unanimous support anywhere we are in town, that we should have that here in town.
Yeah.
Love to hear Chief Galvin's points on that, too.
Yeah. Did you wanna add anything, Tom?
Yeah, I agree. If you look at the Mass DOT regulations on setting speed limits, it's an extremely difficult process, and oftentimes, speed limits are set much higher than what you expect. In 2016, the state enacted this and basically gave some flexibility to communities to be able to lower speed limits. You know, Sean's exactly right, that, you know, the downtown area and there's other areas of town where it just makes sense to lower the limits and to have them at a more reasonable rate. You know, there's times you can't go more than 25 miles an hour through downtown, you can't go 10. But, you know, I think this is gonna give the board and the community a lot of flexibility. You know, it doesn't mean that immediately we have to act on every single street, but it allows that flexibility as we look into the future and as things continue to change, and especially with the development that surrounds us and the increases in traffic for us to manage our speed limits in town.
Actually, I had another point, since he brought up developments, if I could.
Sure, go ahead, Sean.
If you don't mind. One caveat of this is we'll be able to dedicate certain zones if they're appropriate. So, you know, I didn't make any comments on the development that's on Washington Street, but that's a 35 or 40 mile an hour zone. So if that development were to happen, the first thing I would do as a DPW Director, and I'm sure Chief Galvin would agree, we would ask for a specific zone to slow that speed limit down. There's no other reason to do that on Route 16 right now. But if that were to happen, and the same thing for the end of Coolidge Street, Coolidge Street's either 30 or 35 or it's 40 headed towards where the Coolidge Street developments would be. And we would certainly want to tone that down if there's, you know, 100 and some odd units there and a fair amount of turning traffic. So we would have that ability. Right now, we can't. Right now, we'd have to petition the state, do a speed study, and until there's physical restraints that would slow the traffic down, you wouldn't win that battle.
Okay. Eric, I think, yeah, go ahead, Eric.
I just wanna confirm, I can look it up. I was looking in the handouts, I didn't see it. It's thickly settled 200 to 150, because I thought it was 150 feet.
It's 200 now. The state has it as 200. As an average... Sorry, I'm looking for it right now. Average less than 200 feet between, for a distance of a quarter mile. And I played around on the town GIS map, and it's pretty hard to find any spots in town other than the obvious farm areas. You know, the Willis area on Farm and Forest, and then
So you'll say...
All around Paul's house.
It's funny, because when it was 150, I think it was a little while ago, I was looking at it, nowhere in town except for right between that line. So we have RA, RB, RC districts. RA districts have 150 frontage, RBs have 250 frontage. The RC areas around Farm Pond is 250 foot minimum frontages, and that's where you'll see that. That, and like I said, the farm districts and stuff like that is where you're gonna see the things. Just a few comments is unposted, though. It is nice, but it's tough. So you said downtown. If that's posted at 30, this won't affect that. Like, this won't trump that, even though it's more strict. I believe the black and white regulatory signs that actually have an actual state filed regulation behind it will still trump any kind of the unposted general... What do you call it? The general townwide ones, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
The other thing is, for unposted, you can't use radar to enforce them, and I've made people know this, and maybe I shouldn't say it out loud for people to appeal it. You actually have to follow them for a quarter mile and make sure the average, like, whatever that unposted speed is or less, so it's kind of difficult in that sense there. But overall, I like it. I, the town I work in, I've enforced, put in a citywide, whatever it was, 25 mile an hour. I don't know how much it's been enforced, but at least it's good, and hopefully it does reduce some speeds. I certainly would support it here, but I don't think it's gonna be the panacea. I think somebody might be looking for it, that's all I'm saying. The black and white signs are kind of the ultimate. And to this day, after looking into this for years, I'm still not fully sure. I know how to change a black and white sign, it's near impossible, and you have to be at the 85th percentile to do so. And I think a lot of ones we have, it's been grandfathered from like the 1940s or something like that. Any subdivision, I don't think there's a single black and white sign on a single subdivision in town.
Correct, so they'll all go to 25.
That's right. They'll default to 25.
As most of them should be. If you think you should be going through Jeff's neighborhood at more than 25, you shouldn't be.
Which is funny, because when the rule is 150, everything was considered rural, and the default was actually 40 miles an hour. Now, if it's 200 feet, the default is still 40 miles an hour if it's unposted. But like Farm Roads posted, and I think Lake Street's posted, so I don't think that'd be much of an issue.
They are. But again, we had a passing zone by Paul's driveway on Route 27 also back then.
That's right.
It was a little different. It was certainly different.
And that's all posted, right? Bullard Street and 27.
Yeah, Bullard and that end of 27 are.
You have to get up your speed going into Medfield.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I was gonna say. It's 55 when you get to the Seventh Way Brewery. Yeah, yeah. So do we need to vote on this then, Sean?
Well, I don't think, I don't know that you need to vote on it. I mean, it's going to town meeting.
Yeah.
I urge you to vote on it at a town meeting. It's on the warrant.
Yeah, we put it on the warrant on 40 vote.
Okay.
January 12th, maybe your 10th.
Okay. So we're good.
I think you should vote to support it when, you know, when we have the hearing.
I think, yeah, at the advisory hearing, that's when we vote on...
Yes.
Or the, right before it, we'll vote on what...
We voted on Saturday on the Select Board Direct report already, but not on anything else. Okay.
And I didn't bring it to advisory yet, because they just did budgets last night, but at some point, I'm sure they'll wanna see it.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Thank you. So I don't know if there's anything on the warrant. I didn't see anything that we need to discuss further tonight. Does anything? We covered it pretty well at the Saturday meeting. Marion, do you have something you wanted to bring up?
We did. We just were still waiting for some language on the assessors article. And we're waiting for some final language, I believe, from Town Council on the longevity article.
Yeah, that's the one that... I forget where we stand with that. Paul, you can help us here maybe on the longevity with the elected officials that are also town employees.
I understood that Eric and Nancy Hess were collaborating on some final language.
That is nothing to do...
Collaborating on the assessors article, but...
Yeah, that's different. I'm talking about the longevity pay premium.
Oh.
Which is the one that I thought you said we could have an issue if we have a... We have two people that are town employees that are elected also.
So I...
Working on that with council, I believe, right, Paul?
Yeah, I had some discussions with Chris Petrin about that.
Okay. And so are you expecting that we'll change the wording of the article maybe before the advisory public hearing slightly?
No, he... He changed the, a little bit, word or two in, like, Article 8.
I didn't see where it mentioned elected employees at all.
And the point that I was raising is that there's a statute that said that elected officials' compensation has to be determined every year on an annual basis. And he is, he has tweaked Article 8 to have that done in Article 8.
Hmm.
I may have the number wrong.
No, I don't see it in there, but that's okay. We'll discuss it on March 18th with advisory, I guess. Maybe you just follow up with, I don't see it in there.
I'll have Vicky follow up with Town Council.
Just see if that, that's the only one I think there. We don't have the regional school capital number, I don't think. Yeah, we have the Pine Hill number.
Right.
Marion, are you raising your hand? Are you waving at us there? You gotta unmute yourself.
Marion, you're muted.
You're still muted. No, you are. Now you're good.
I'm good. Yeah, I have a question. Diane included in our packet, the ground-mounted solar article being put forth by Planning Board, and I had a question about that. They're having the required public hearing for that this coming Tuesday. But my question is this, and I've asked it of Gino and Chris, actually, and it's still not resolved, I think. It's a public hearing, and yet other than what I've got in my packet, I look for ways that the public might access the language of that bylaw. It's like 10 pages long. It's a lot.
It's a ton. I think it's more than 10.
There's no public access to it that I can figure out.
Jeanie might bail us out, I hope.
I can talk to Gino tomorrow, and I can put it up on the website and do an E-Lark, so everybody would have it.
Okay, but just as a matter of principle, I was concerned that we're having a public, the Planning Board is having a public hearing without the public being able to see this 10 pages of text. And I believe the public hearing is in person, because it's their first meeting of the month. And there's no way for the public to see, and so how is that a true public hearing? I mean, this is kind of a governance question. But I was concerned about it, because this is an important bylaw change. It's really big. And if people are want to have input, they have to have a way to get to see it in advance. There's no way they can show up the meeting and know what's going on. So maybe someone else who's...
And to modify your strong point, it's actually 18 pages of content, not 10.
Right.
And I think they're actually having two hearings. I think the way they're doing it, they're having a public hearing where they're just gonna discuss it among the board, and I don't know the distance, like a week or a week and a half later, they're having another public hearing where they're having public comment, I think.
I didn't see that on the Town Council.
Well, check that, but that's my understanding that they're... This thing's enormous.
Yeah. How many solar panels does it take to counteract print the warrant this year for that many pages of...
Hey, we have an Eagle project. You know, they're putting a new building, it's like an outdoor... There's outdoor education building. They've added the Pine Hill by the playground, a little shed thing.
Okay.
And I already have an Eagle project. He's putting solar panels on the shed at Pine Hill and teaching the Pine Hill kids about solar power.
Oh, that's great. But this bylaw is an important change, you know?
No, it's huge. It's a big deal.
And, you know, there are a lot of problems in this language that I'll be happy to discuss at Planning Board, but I'm just concerned that the public doesn't have access.
No, it's a very good point. I've talked to Chris about it, and that's how I know... I may have mixed it up, but there's actually two hearings, I think. I may not have characterized it completely accurately, but I had a long conversation with Chris Owen about this about a week and a half ago. So maybe just see what his plan is, but if Jeanie can help us by posting it on the website...
Well, the posting for the website on next Tuesday, Planning Board meeting, is the public hearing for this bylaw. Maybe they're having two of them, but whether it's the first or the second, public should have access.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Jeff?
Yes.
Real quick, I just talked to Gino. He said they're gonna open it on the 7th, and they're continuing it on the 21st, and that will be a hybrid Zoom meeting. So it'll be in person and on Zoom.
That's great, Jeanie, but how does the public get access to the 18 pages of text?
Well, that I'll put, that I can put on the website, so people can see it, read it, download it, print it. We can have it that way, and if I can talk to Gino about having copies at Town Hall if necessary.
Maybe on the agenda, they could put on the agenda also, they could revise the agenda to say, note, the document is available on the website, too.
Right.
Right. Do you mind, Diane, can you tell her that, or Jackie, can you tell?
Yes.
Do you know that?
We'll make sure that gets done.
That way, when someone, because they're not likely to go look for the document, but if the agenda says that it's there, they'll...
It's on the website, okay. We'll make sure that gets done.
Paul, did you have something you were gonna add?
I'm just gonna add just a legal concept, in case you're not aware, that unlike every other by, every other type of bylaw, zoning bylaws are retroactive back to the date of first publication. So the publication of the notice of the Planning Board hearing is usually the date that triggers the effective date of the bylaw if it passes town meeting. The importance of the retroactivity is that's if you started a project before then, your grandfather, if you started afterwards, you have to comply with the bylaw. So it's a really important date. In order for that to kick in early, you have to actually notify the public, so you have to publish the article. That can be published by, in the ad, what counts is what's in the ad. And the ad can say that the full text, you do a summary of the bylaw, and then you say the full text is available on the website or wherever else. It's the ad that triggers the effective date of the bylaw.
Paul, I have a follow-up question to that. This bylaw, I would hope is gonna have some language changes. So if the changes occur in response to the public meeting or other vetting that takes place before it's passed a town meeting, does the retroactivity go back to the original or to the amended bylaw?
So the article that's on the warrant should be what's published, but the article can be amended at town meeting, and the amendments at town meeting are retroactive back to the date of first publication.
Yeah, that's good, but you know, bylaws, the language of all these articles can be tweaked between now and town meeting. Even though, you know, at this point, it's a big placeholder, but it's still a placeholder. It's not the final language necessarily that's going to be published in the warrant.
Well, that may be why they didn't publish. Maybe the answer to what you're saying is they didn't publish it because they don't wanna fix the language. Once you publish it, you kind of fix the language.
Right, but anyway, the whole question is public access, and you know. Anyway, I don't wanna draw this out, but...
Do you wanna touch base tomorrow, maybe with Chris? Do you mind, Marion?
No, I will.
Yeah. Okay.
Sorry, excuse me. I've had my hand up.
Oh, Jackie.
Are you gonna add to us here?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the bylaw is available in the Town Clerk's office, and I believe that the hearing publication also says that. So maybe Jeanie could add that to the, to you know, whatever she posts on the website.
I noticed, Jackie, you're right. It does say it's available in the Town Clerk's office. So someone who wants to go to the public hearing has to go to your office and get a copy of the bylaw in order to be able to... I mean, that seems to me kind of... I appreciate that you're doing what's legal, but...
No, I understand that, but Jeanie could also add that, maybe add that language just in case. People can't print it or whatever, if they can read it, but if they can't print it, it's available at the office.
It's probably a question of principle, you know, you're gonna fix this particular case, but in general, it should be available.
But could I add one more point to this discussion?
Sure, Paul.
I wanna say that as a Town Council and other communities, we have a lot of lawsuits coming from development... A lot of lawsuits coming from developers of solar power. This. It's a very controversial area. So this bylaw is really important to the town. And you might say, who would be interested in Sherburne? But I can say that people have knocked on my door asking if they can. Lease five acres of my land for the solar power. Which, which I said no to. They are here. They are looking for land. There are, this is a current issue. So it's one that we, we really wanna get enacted at this town meeting.
Right, and enacted in a format that, that is good for Sherburne. Uh, because, yeah, uh, I, I don't wanna belabor that point, but it really is important that people think hard about this.
Okay. I think we've covered it. Are there any other warrant articles that people wanna discuss? Hearing done. And we have the checklist and the timeline. Any questions on those? One thing on the timeline, um. It has us signing the warrant on March. What's the day, Diane? On March second, we would sign the town meeting warrant on March second.
Right. The only thing we added to the timeline was the planning board public hearing. We put that date in there and we put the date in there for the ballot questions. And then the select board is on schedule for signing it on March second. So voting to approve it and sign it, as we've done in previous years.
We good with all that? All right.
Okay.
We'll keep going. The next thing, we have a new ARPA table.
I do have a question now, since he said.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We signed, we signed them on, on March second. When is the, um, me, uh, meeting with advisory?
Eighteen. March eighteen.
And, but it's not the, the advisory, they're doing it a hundred percent virtual. They're not doing it.
Yeah, a hundred percent virtual.
Yeah. I mean, do we wanna give ourselves more time? What's, what's, what is the second? Is that a Thursday?
Yes.
Yep.
I would go the other way, do it much earlier. You should have the set for the planning boards, so our, our article a lot sooner.
Do you want me to put it on the agenda for February fif- sixteen?
I'll keep it the second.
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 They may have changes from the public hearing, Paul.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
I, I, I've dealt till even happen on this.
We've, we've done it so many years. I don't know why we would wanna change our.
Okay, so those are the only dates.
Ways, we don't need to do it that way.
Those were the dates that, that were added. All right.
So can I move approval of the timeline?
Why, Eric, did you have a question or no?
No, I, I've questioned the second somewhat, but certainly not gonna go earlier. I thought it actually be pushed, but certainly no, don't make it earlier.
Yeah.
Crazy, yeah.
O- okay, Paul, you can make the motion. Do I have a second? You're, you wanna say the motion, Paul?
I'm moved to approve the timeline as amended with the planning board dates and the date of the. Ballot question.
And you have a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks, Marion. Marion?
I.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. So we're on to the, um, ARPA. Uh, Jeremy's not here, but Deb is here, so she can talk through it. They. Um, we found, as I kinda hinted in my email, that we found there was some flaws in the prior table. So, um, do you wanna walk us through the table, uh, Deb, please?
Yeah, do you wanna go? Can you share that, uh, Jeff?
Uh, I don't have it up. Do you, Diane, do you have it?
I don't. I, we have my hard copy here.
How about you, George? Are you?
I have it. I actually do have it up, so.
Oh, great. Thank you.
You're quicker than I am.
One second, um.
This is what I would have done to you.
That's kind of where I am as well.
I've just gotta make sure I share the right thing here, I hope. Hundred different things.
Yeah, while you're doing that, I just wanna apologize for the confusion on the last, uh, spreadsheet. I had no idea that it was in the packet. Um, I definitely would have, uh, reviewed and updated it prior to that, had I known, so.
Can you guys see that?
Yeah, but if you can zoom in a little bit, probably good, George. I don't know if you can or not.
Yeah, I can. Better?
George, make it full screen because it's showing your left-hand side of you.
How do I do that? Sorry.
Click on the three little lines that's next to the word final packet. It left the word final packet.
There we go.
There you go. You got it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks, George.
Yeah. So the good news is that this spreadsheet has been updated, revised, and has all the information and the answers to all the questions from the last discussion. So you can see on the left-hand side, uh, the authorized, uh, dollar amounts. So, you know, the first line obviously is the total amount of money we received. And then it lists all the, um, projects that have been approved by the select board. And, you know, we went through and double-checked all the select board minutes and everything else like that. So everything that has been approved to date is the eight hundred and twenty-three, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-five cents. Then the next column. Oh, and of that, we have, we have reduced that amount by the. Hundred thousand dollar earmarks in the Woodland Leland Water Project and the digitizing so that those numbers. Do not reflect the earmark money. Then the next column is the spending to date. The following column is what we expect, um, to spend of, of the money that has been allocated. So on two of the projects, there's a small amount of money that can go back into the unallocated part. Um, the one from the sub, support public health was due to duplication. And when you, um, voted for the antigen test, we thought at that time that we might have to buy another batch. Which I confirmed with the Board of Health is no longer, uh, relevant. So that seven thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars can now go into the unused balance of, um. The unallocated. So the total funds we have a bit available is four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. The proposed projects that have been discussed are the main, the main stare at Farm Pond along with the Stormwater. And the amount that was proposed was a hundred and ten thousand. Um, in addition to the irrigation of Laurel Farms for three hundred and fifty thousand. Those have been discussed, but no vote has been taken. So they are not allocated at this point in time. And if you would take the four hundred and fifty from the four seventy-nine, you would end up with nineteen thousand dollars. The only other thing that was discussed out, and it was, no vote was taken. It was just a discussion that we should have a reserve for future health needs. At that time, Jen Thompson said, oh, a hundred thousand dollars would be nice. There was really no discussion about it. There was no vote taken. And, you know, since things have changed since a year ago, I'm not sure if you feel that there's a need for that or not. So I didn't include any dollar amount in there. So if you take what's available minus what the proposed projects are. There's still nineteen thousand, seven hundred dollars left.
Thank you, Deb. This, this actually, cause I think I was the one that brought up the question last time.
You, you did.
Confused, and this, this makes it very clear. I really appreciate you, um. Uh, fixing this and, and making it clear, cause now I think. Just to revisit our last meeting, I think Dave was asking for what, a hundred thousand so they could get started on doing welding. At Laurel Fields. I would actually wanna make a motion, cause we have the funds available now. I'm clear that. To allocate the hundred thousand to Laurel Fields to do the testing.
Second.
You think we should, well, let me just clarify. You think we should vote the three fifty or just the one hundred?
No, I think just the hundred, because I, Sean, can you kind of, I'm gonna unshare my screen so we can see.
Yeah, okay.
But, um, if I can remember how to do that, uh.
It's on the green button. There you go.
Um, but Sean, is that, is that what he was asking for last time?
Yeah, they, they were very clear and I, and I, I. Had, had talked to him in previous meetings with them that, that, that that's what they should ask for.
Yeah.
They get a multi-step pro- progress, process. They can come back.
Yeah.
You, you know, it's a clear stopping point. They're gonna.
Because we wanna test the wells before we allocate the whole money, but.
Exactly. Everyone wants to hear what happens. It, it's perfect. It, it reserves the money. I mean, they, they wouldn't be able to spend it all right now anyway. They have to put the wells in, so.
Yep.
It's the right thing to do, but we don't, we, we certainly don't wanna delay it anymore because they'd already be off and running.
Right.
I, I already, I sent an email that next night to, to Dave, just saying, I went through the numbers myself, but I'm not the finance director. But I, I, I was pretty confident that when I looked at it, there were some things that were not.
Right. And I called him that night too, because I, I do so, totally support the Laurel, Laurel Field project.
Yeah, yeah.
Straighten out first, so I really appreciate Deb doing that. So now that's why I'm comfortable in making that motion.
Yes.
To allocate the hundred thousand to them at this point.
So do we have a second for the motion? Did you check it? You, okay, Marion?
I.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. So do you mind reaching out to him, George?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Dave tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
This is with the understanding, right, that the other two hundred and fifty is already held for them.
Yes.
And we're. Yeah, yeah, we still, we still have now, I would say, three sixty-three. Almost like three eighty that we don't have allocated, cause we still have to get. A proposal for that hundred and ten that we're kind of setting aside for the stairs at Farm Pond.
Yeah.
Question, question?
Yes, go ahead, Paul.
I think there's a, a limit as to when the appropriation expires.
So we actually had a meeting, you'll laugh at this. We met with, um, our, our US Congressman. A week ago, we met, a week ago. Tuesday, we met with Jake Oshinclaus. Oshinclaus, or however you say it. He came, he came to town hall, cause with the redistricting, we're now in. We're no longer in Catherine Clark's district. We're in his district now. So that's being extended, he told us, by one or two years, all those dates.
Terrific, so.
So they haven't voted on it in Congress. So by the way, he met with us on Tuesday. On Wednesday morning. He did the first, something that's never been done in, in US Congress before. He gave a introduction to a bill in Congress. That was written by a chatbot, not written by his staff.
Oh.
So he said it took three iterations through the chatbot to get something that was, um, something he could r- read, but. He was the first person to ever use an AI tool to create a, a, a motion before Congress.
I don't know if that's good or bad, Jeff.
I know, I know.
What is the date on extended?
It, it's one or two years longer. I think it's like, it might even be twenty twenty-seven. There, there's two dates, actually. There's a date by which you have to. Um, approve the project and then a second date by when you have to have completed the project. There's like an authorization date and then a completion date.
What are those dates before that?
Right now, yeah, go ahead.
I'm not, right, right now, it's twenty twenty-four. It has to be allocated and spent by twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
The end of the calendar year, not fiscal year, calendar year.
I'm pretty sure they're extending the second date to twenty twenty-seven, and I don't remember what they're extending.
So too, right.
The authorization date.
Does that take an act of Congress?
I think so, sounded like. He, what, that wasn't the motion he made with chatbot, but he, he made it sound like it wasn't a done deal yet, but it was almost certain.
Well, perhaps we should prudently plan on the twenty-fourth, get projects set.
We're, we're pretty far along.
And if that gets extended, then it gets extended, but if it doesn't, at least we have a plan.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna leave any.
I think we already have a plan. That's the whole point of that spreadsheet.
Yeah, yeah. But I was partly just explaining that he came and so did Becca Roush and, uh, James, Serena DeRosa. They all three came. All right.
Uh, Jeff? I just wanna let you know, I put, uh, Sean on for the sixteenth meeting so he can. Present the, uh, engineering report he has for Farm Pond. So the board can vote to release that.
For this a hundred and ten thousand?
Yes, so he's coming on the sixteenth and the board can listen and then vote to release the funds for him too.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we voted on, uh, a hundred thousand for the, uh, irrigation, so that's a good thing. So we're good there. Um, so we're really down to routine business. I have, um, I think two items, but does anyone, uh. Do you, do you have any town administrator thing you wanted to mention, Diane?
No, I, no, I don't.
Any select board members have anything they wanna?
Yeah, I could say something.
Okay. Marion had her hand raised first, then you, Paul.
Yep, fine.
Okay, this is easy. Um, yeah, those of us who've been, uh, kind of, uh. Tracking master plan, open space plan, uh, wanted to keep bringing to the select board from time to time. Uh, committees that you never hear from and. Analogous to the kind of committee reports that we did last year from various committees. And, uh. We're proposing that, uh. I don't know if you wanna hear from Recreation Commission, cause we've just heard quite a bit from them, but. Uh, the Agricultural Commission, Traffic Safety and other committees that you. May not know what they've been doing, but have been, that, that they've been busy. Uh, so I have two questions. One, are you interested in still having now and then, uh, select board. Reports to the select board from committees like ten or fifteen minutes to update us?
I vote yes.
I like them, but I would wonder maybe after town meeting or, you know, we're kind of, we're kind of meetinged out between now and, uh. At least early April.
Yeah, the timing is, uh, is the second question.
Yeah.
But if you want them to continue, um. And some of these committees you haven't heard from, from a long time, and I would guess you have no idea what they're doing. Uh, there, the, these reports can be fairly short.
Well, one thing I'd like to do though, Marion, is work with Diane. What I'd like to do, cause we also have a lot of committees with vacancies, so. At the same time, we understand what they do. We might wanna look at. Uh, if that committee has a vacancy or, you know.
I'm in the process right now. It's funny that you mentioned that, Jeff. I just started. Uh, the vacancy process that was approved by the select board last year. So it actually starts in February when I start going through all of the, um. The, the boards and committees and I've contacted the town clerk's office and she's given me a list of what vacancies are on each board or committee. And I'm starting to compile that list right now, and I'll be very happy to share with Marion if she would like.
Uh, yeah, that would be great. Uh, Jeff, I'm not sure, your, your point is that you'd like to highlight committees that have, uh.
Well, no, I think we should know that. In other words, if we're meeting with them, they may need help recruiting people.
The Agricultural Commission was just reconstituted last year by, um, George Fisk, if you remember.
George Fisk.
I've got all seven employees, I, uh, seven members on it.
I think John Hudson Walker's on it, I believe.
Yes, he is.
There right now, but a lot of these committees are new. And it's nice for them to have a little exposure to select board and.
No, I agree with that, but we wanna know where they stand with membership too. You know, we have some committees that are challenged to recruit people. You know, Concom was in that situation for a while. Personnel board's. Kind of in that position now. We just added a person, but they only have three on personnel board.
So, uh, is your point, Jeff, that we should prioritize committees that have, uh, uh, openings or, or what?
No, I don't know if I would say that, cause some other committees might be more important, but we should. It should be part of the discussion. Ho- however you think we should prioritize them. Sort of a succession plan and, um. Committee planning of membership should be on the agenda, just to make sure that. You know, we're, we're. Supporting them and get, helping them recruit people. Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Part of the, part of the way this, eh, this has been done in the past is. We have a, a list of three or four different committees that you haven't heard from.
Yeah.
And we go to them and say, you know, uh, how, how soon, you know, in a month or two months, would you be ready to come to the select board? And then we go to Diane and look for an opening and then we go back.
But we could promote it on the, uh, you know, that night and maybe someone that's interested in that topic could. See it and then volunteer to be a member or something, so.
Yeah, that's another purpose for this. That's exactly right. So I'll work with Diane on this, but obviously, we're, when we're really busy, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Uh, when we have a, a relatively open agenda and a short meeting. It's a good time to plug one of these committees.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
All right, any others?
Just on that, on that front. What if you had like a. I don't know, this is kind of a strange idea, but, um, like a. Openings, like a, are you interested in volunteering, like, open house type thing where?
Yeah, yeah.
You have like, and you just invite everybody to the community center one night and you have all these openings and people can talk to people on the different committees. And say, what do you do on these committees? And people get to know, like, eh, eh, it's just maybe a way to get more people involved. And see if people go up for it.
I'm gonna try it.
Awesome idea, because, you know, I can't tell you how many times people that I meet randomly have approached me and said. I'd really like to get involved, you know, what committee, what I fit on.
Yeah, yeah.
I direct them to a committee and I don't know what happens, but.
Right.
Great.
I, yeah, I do.
Maybe, maybe like an open house with all, every, everything there.
It ma- it makes me think of orientation week at college.
Right, like a club fair or something like that, yeah.
The chess club or whatever it was, you know.
They do it at the high school when kids are freshmen, they go to all the different clubs and.
Well, yeah, we might even be able to wait, we could sort of do it virtually, if we could, you know, have a hybrid one, and so that if someone could somehow dial in.
Sometimes in person is a nice way for people.
It's better, but if they, if they weren't available, you could just say, can I get more information or?
Or, or new people in town to come and meet people that are.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You could do that at the new library.
Yeah, that, that was my report, but you could give it better, I, I. I walked through the library, and I told Liz I wanted a book, they actually have some books downstairs on the first floor in the sacks now.
Wow.
Looks great.
Do you have what the actual opening date's gonna be, or is it still unclear?
I don't, I'm not sure we have that nailed, do we, Sean?
We do not.
Okay.
But they're out of the community center now, so. They're doing, I think they're doing uh, Minuteman books, sort of like they were before, like a sort of a takeout food kind of way, they have brown paper bags, so they staple them and put your. Minuteman book in them.
Right now, they're totally closed.
Yeah.
I mean, it's chaos, but. They'll be physically, physically completely out of the community center, I think Monday, if not Tuesday.
So I had a comment when you're all done.
Sure, I have another one, but go ahead, I, I, I'll let you go first, Paul.
So I spent uh, three days at the MMA convention, going to all these different courses. And uh. Just wanted to recount one little funny story, which was, was in a seminar on what to do with private roads. And. The uh. One of the, one of the guy, one of the questions. Wanted to discuss, was it true that in Dover, the private roads are paved with gold? And. Apparently, the consensus of the group was, yeah. In cities and towns in the Commonwealth, it's true that all those rich people in Dover. On private roads, paved the roads with gold.
Ah, okay. But did you tell them we, we live in Sherburne, we live in Sherburne?
Yeah, we.
We, we don't even pave the roads. We tell them to go see the people in Rockwood. All right, that's good, Paul, so the others, but on that topic, though, this is a topic you had interest in, Paul, um. So, the Dopping Brook Silverwood neighborhood, last Sunday afternoon, um, um. I went through the neighborhood with um. Uh, Sean came, and we had uh, three people from um, Jeremy came, and three people from Concom. Walked the entire uh, Dopping Brook all the way up to the, we didn't go on Silverwood Farm property, but we went right up to it. And we actually talked to Jonathan Hudson Walker, Courtney Eck claims that he has cameras out there now, because as soon as we were walking, you know, we were. You know, three hundred yards from his house, but as soon as we were there, he came over with his dog. So we, we uh, saw the water flow conditions, and they, uh, Concom has a few ideas of how they're gonna approach it, so. I don't have the answers yet, but I just want to let you know that we responded right away, and then, I think the neighbors, Sean. Can add to this, and neighbors, I'm pretty sure knew we were there, we didn't talk to any specifically, but I'm pretty confident that um. Having, you know, five or six cars parked at the end of their cul-de-sac was unusual. So, uh, do, do you want to add anything, Sean?
Yeah, no.
Because Concom is meeting tonight, I think also, I don't, I don't, I doubt it's on their agenda, but I think they have a meeting tonight also, but.
So in, in whose court is the ball right now over there?
I view it as Concom's, I don't know if Sean can contradict me, uh. Uh, you know, because they have orders and conditions that haven't been enforced yet. But we have to figure out a way that they're, they, they have, they're trying to come up with some compromises for how the water can be. Um, there's a, there's a separation point where some water goes through. Closer to the Dopping Brook neighborhood, and some goes in this channel that goes directly down to a retention pond, I think it's retention pond three, I think. So they're trying to maybe uh, limit the portion that can be diverted. The part through the neighborhood, always, that stream was always there, Sean can tell you the history of it. Um, but the part that this other uh, uh, waterway was what Jonathan was, Hudson Walker sort of created without notifying anyone, so. They're trying to uh, control and limit the amount that goes to the neighborhood, but not stop it, because it's a historical flow pattern through there. And the town has the twenty-foot easement, it's, the property owner's land, but the town has a twenty-foot easement along the property line there with the. Up against the farm.
So if I could. Just to explain that, a, a neighbor in that area had contacted me to find out what's going on. I forwarded that to Jeff and to Sean and to Michael Lesser. And I got a reply from, from uh, Jeff. I told the uh, the neighbors that I was going to. Follow Jeff, your suggestion to direct this towards the Concom. So I've. Haven't done that yet, but I was, that was gonna be my next step, but this is, this is great.
That, no, they know, we were there, I forget, you told me on Thursday, or whatever day you guys, Thursday or Friday, we were there Sunday afternoon.
So I'm gonna tell those neighbors to watch the last uh, three minutes of this select board recording. Recorded, I hope.
We are, but tell them to watch the Concom meeting.
But thank you for doing that, much appreciated.
Yeah, it was, it was all good. And it was, I, I was actually pleased, because it was Courtney and Michael Lesser, because they're co-chairs, but they brought, I forget his name, but. Uh, one of the new members that just joined Concom seemed pretty interested. So I think it is attorney, I think he's a environmental attorney of some kind, so it was good.
Your neighborhood.
Does he? Is that the one that's up on Ivy Lane?
Oh, yeah, that, I think, I think it's, is it Matt?
Could be, is that who it was, is that his name, Sean, do you remember his name?
It's, it's Matt Mitchell, is it not?
No, no.
You're talking about a select board member?
No, no, that's Concom.
I mean, the Concom, yeah, I don't know.
I'm sorry.
I, I don't know who he is.
Yeah, I think, I think it's Matt, I think you're right, George, I, I introduced myself, but I forget.
Matt O'Leary?
No, it was not Matt O'Leary.
Oh, it wasn't, okay. Yeah.
The other attorney that you guys.
Yeah, both guys were attorneys that were appointed.
He, he was very serious, he was very uh, studious, I guess I would say.
He's, the other guy's very good too, he, he, he's more recent to town, I think he just moved here in the last few years, but he, you're right, he's an environmental attorney.
So it was uh, good to see him there, I felt, so. So that's, we responded quickly, I mean, we, I knew this was still out there, we basically, the drought caused it to not be an issue, is basically what happened, so. Uh, it's now uh, an issue again, so. Anyway, just wanted to let you know that we had responded.
Thank you.
I think that's it, does someone uh, want to make a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All right, second?
Second.
Marion?
I.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well, thank you guys, thank you uh, audience, and great meeting today, good night, thank you Diane.
Thank you.